All right. Thanks for coming, those that are here in person. This is Peter Casper. I'd like to call the Board of Selectmen's regular meeting on March 20th to 25, 2025, to order at seven o'clock. And those that are able and willing, please join me in standing to.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Got it? Right there. Okay.
Okay.
So, Mr. Tierney, we'll move to Section Three in the agenda. Additions or changes to our agenda, anything that you wish to?
No, I think we're just going to roll it the way it is.
Okay, thank you. It moves us to Section Four on our agenda, which is public comment. This section of the agenda is reserved for persons in attendance who wish to briefly address the Board of Selectmen. We're request that a person's comments be limited to a single period lasting three minutes or less. While the Board respects the right of the public to provide comment, this time is not intended for open discussion or a board response. Residents who wish to request a dialogue should simply make arrangements through the Town Manager's Office, myself, or frankly, anyone on the board. We are very happy to engage in a dialogue with you, just the structure does not allow for that based on our need to get to a significant amount of town business. Donna, is there anyone online?
Nothing online.
Anyone in the audience who wishes to present a public comment? Okay, moves us to Section Five on our agenda. Mr. Tierney, good to know and special recognition.
Yes, we do have something for tonight. We have some members or future member, any member of the WPCA here with us tonight. And this is to honor a selectman, Clara O'Brien, who elegantly served 25-plus years for the town of Hebron in different capacities. So what I would like to do, if it's appropriate with the Board of Selectmen, is have Dave O'Brien, the husband of Clara, come up on the list of hamburger. And if you could grab that plaque and bring it over, I know it's heavy.
But you've been working out.
Got it, man. Trying.
You've been working out.
Where you want it, just over here somewhere.
So the cameras can see it, which are behind you. It's really heavy.
Yeah, I'm not going to hurt myself, not the plaque, that's for sure. Where's the, there we go. There we go. Okay, for anybody who wants to see it on TV. I don't know if anybody here has seen it. They're really passing around. Yeah, so I'm, my name's Chris Hamburger. I've met some of you folks on the current chair of the Water Pollution Control Authority, AKA WPCA. Clara was on the board almost from the beginning. And when she unfortunately passed away, we, all the members of the board, really felt that we needed to do something for her to recognize, not just the WPCA, although I think that was, that board was dear to her heart probably more than the others, but very active in town. Or she was on Board of Selectmen for a while. CIP Committee, Board of Finance, et cetera. So she dedicated a lot of time to the town and working with her, I think it would be extremely conscientious. It'd be a little difficult at times, but she was always fair and honest. And mainly, she was always looking out for the, for the good of the town fiscally as well as otherwise. So we had a plaque manufactured up, recognizing the various boards that she was on. And Andy, with Andy's support, we're going to get it mounted here. I think the plan is to put it out here in the hallway. I appreciate your help on it. Appreciate the Board of Selectmen. We talked about it, I think, in the last meeting, one of the previous meetings, and all agreed it was okay, let's put it up in the, in the town hall here. So, thank you very much. That's all I really got to say.
Thank you. So.
And yeah, this is her, I'm sorry, this is her husband, Dave.
I just want to take a moment and thank Chris and the rest of the board. Actually Clara really appreciated everything that the town had done for her. Actually, when we first moved to town, Robert Lee, who was before Andy was on the, the building, or rather, the town committee then, Robert Lee actually had helped us. We lived down Chesterfield, which was a private road. And the town, very graciously, through Robert Lee and Andy, turned that into a public road. So of course, yeah, so of course Clara wanted to reciprocate, and Robert had put her on the Board of Assessment Appeals. So it's been a win-win relationship, and it always has been, I believe, between all of the town members and the town board itself. So thank you.
Thank you, I really appreciate it. It's unfortunate that recognitions such as this results from someone passing, but I think of your wife and, and the passion she brought to everything that she was involved with. I think of when she was teaching my children religious education and how she felt about that, and then serving with her on boards. And, and I just think of her, remember her as someone who was passionate about everything she did, whether it was talking about her. I will never forget, she says, okay, in the, in the doctor setting, you have 11 minutes to meet with your patients. She was helping me understand like how it, how it is to work within, you know, going to doctors' offices and their job. I don't know exactly what she had on, she was managing a group of offices or something, but she was telling me with a great deal of passion that I had 11 minutes to meet with my doctor because of the way the medical community was in general, not at her practice, but in general. And then about the issues in town, and that, as Chris was talking about, the passion and the commitment to the community. And it's, it's so often that these folks that serve and serve some, serves for the right reasons, and they typically serve in, to a degree of silence, they just serve, and then they, they stop serving, they move on, whatever the case may be. But it is fortunate that we can pause and recognize someone who contributed a tremendous amount to the community and was consistent with her passion for any issue that she was involved with, and made us better as a town. And frankly, serving with her on a board made us, made us better as board members because we had to bring that same degree of passion and commitment to service that she was exemplifying in everything that she did. So thank you for allowing us to have this moment, and we'll obviously remember her with great fondness and the impact that she had in our community. So thank you, Dave.
I appreciate your time.
I would like to echo those comments. I knew her both professionally and personally. And that type of dedication is rare, especially nowadays. And sadly, there's not nearly enough of it. So I thank her for serving and doing all of the missions to help the town. And I thank you as the spouse for allowing her to be able to do that. You know, we always thank the people, but the other people behind the scenes that, you know, many nights go where the spouse is off doing this, that, or the other thing for the town. So thank you also. And thank you also for continuing to want to step up, and, and that'll be a later thing tonight.
Oh, I thought you.
Great person and sorely missed.
Again, any other comments on the board or to Andy? Okay, thank you again, yeah?
Thank you, guys. Thank you. Next on the agenda is appointments and resignations under Item Six. There's several, so the first one we'll start with is Board of Assessment Appeals alternate appointment. Attaches correspondence from Jen Fadaski, D., Democrat, expressing interest in being appointed to the, as an alternate to the Board of Assessment Appeals. Also attached is a town attorney's opinion requested by the Board of Selectmen on this simultaneous services on the Planning and Zoning Commission and the BAA Board of Assessment Appeals.
I appreciate you taking that extra step to gather additional information, and I'll ask Tiffany to read the motion, please.
Sure. Move that the Hebron Board of Selectmen appoint Janet Fadaski as an alternate to the Board of Assessment Appeals for a term to run until November 2027.
Motion's been read, any additional discussion? No? Okay. There we go, we will move to a vote, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye or nay, if you're opposed, or if you wish to abstain, please note that as well. Dan?
Dale Larson, aye.
Keith Pettit, aye.
Tiffany Teely, aye.
Claudia Riley, aye.
Peter Casper, a motion passed unanimously, thank you very much, Mr. Tierney. B.
Item B is Water Pollution Control Authority Appointment. Attaches correspondence from David O'Brien, R., Republican, expressing interest in being appointed to the Water Pollution Control Authority.
Hey, we'll read the motion, and Dan, if you would be so kind?
Sure. Move that the Hebron Board of Selectmen appoint David O'Brien to the Water Pollution Control Authority for a term to run until December 2027.
Any additional, any discussion, excuse me? Okay, and then we'll, did you want to?
No, no, I'm just wanting to say thank you.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Red, we'll move to a vote, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye or nay, if opposed, or please note if you wish to abstain. Dan?
Dale Larson, aye.
Thank you, Keith.
Keith Pettit, aye.
Thank you.
Tiffany Teely, aye.
Thank you.
Claudia Riley, aye.
Peter Casper, aye, motion passed unanimously, thank you again, Dave. Mr. Tierney.
Under Appointments and Resignations, Item C, Economic Development Commission Appointments. Attaches correspondence from Julie Rodriguez, unaffiliated, expressing interest in serving on the Economic Development Commission.
We'll read the motion. Claudia, would you read the motion, please?
Move that the Hebron Board of Selectmen appoint Julie Rodriguez to the Economic Development Commission to, to a term to run until December 2026.
Thank you for that, reading that motion, any discussion? Is she maybe here? Nope. Okay. Motion's been read, we'll move to a vote, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye and nay, if opposed, or please note if you wish to abstain. Dan?
Dale Larson, aye.
Keith?
Keith Pettit, aye.
Thank you.
Tiffany Teely, aye.
Thank you.
Claudia Riley, aye.
Peter Casper, aye, motion passed unanimously, thank you very much. Mr. Tierney.
Appointments and Resignations, Item D, Parks and Recreation Commission Alternate Appointment. Attaches letter to Tyler Kistner, unaffiliated, expressing his interest in being appointed to the Parks and Recreation Commission.
Keith, would you be so kind?
Move that the Hebron Board of Selectmen appoint Tyler Kistner as an alternate on the Parks and Recreation Commission to a term to run until December 2027.
Thank you very much, discussion? No discussion, we'll move to a vote, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye, opposed, nay, or please note if you wish to abstain. Dan?
Dale Larson, aye.
Thank you, Keith.
Keith Pettit, aye.
Thank you, Tiffany.
Tiffany Teely, aye.
Claudia?
Claudia Riley, aye.
Thank you, Peter Casper, aye, motion passed unanimously, and thank you all very much for your willingness to serve our community. Okay, Mr. Tierney. Town Manager Report Seven, for those following at home on our agenda.
I'm ready for it. Thank you both.
Thank you so much.
We're losing our Cooper, because he's been promoted to sergeant. Bryce Reed, who's been with us a while and served this community very well, administered police department along with myself with excellence, and everybody got along, and it was smooth. And while he was here, I don't know, I met a new gentleman that's going to be filling in for him today, but I'm not sure that's going to be his full-time replacement. There's a few people that have put in for it, so we'll find out probably in April. But it's going to be a big loss because he was very hands-on and helpful and had a good work ethic, so, not that I'm saying the other ones don't, but it seemed to be a good fit. So it's going to be a loss to the community. He made a lot of good friends.
Andy, just out of curiosity, how was the selection made for the permanent replacement?
It's, I, the Board of Selectmen, all myself, have no input. It's all done through the HR Department and the state police. You know, when I, when I'm going to the Good Old Boy Network years ago, you, you had a little bit of a say, because it was more of a, it is pretty, pretty authentic process now, where there's really not any outside input. They go by their experience, they take a test, and the few of the things they use to finalize who's the successful candidate, but, you know, I couldn't, even as a town manager, I couldn't, you know, put any leverage on who we had. Okay, the field lighting has started at, that's part. They are going to erect the poles on Monday, I believe. Going to pour the cement, the tubes are in. The drilling went well, we didn't hit anything.
That's great.
Danny knows what I'm talking about.
Cables or anything? And there's nothing marked. Oh, okay, so we were fortunate.
We were.
So that's moving forward. You know, even though the financing for the ARP is over, the projects are just beginning to start.
It's going to be a busy year.
It is.
They'll be starting up at the dog park in two weeks. Pickleball is scheduled to start in the middle of April. So they're moving our skate park, waiting on a building permit, and then they'll get started, so I expect them next week or two. Report on the Maple Fest, Donna wants to jump in. I, from what I was told and what I've seen, it went well, not too many complaints, at least in my, in my email box, I don't know.
I'm not aware of any complaints at all. I think everybody that attended, and there were many people that attended, had a really good time.
What about compliments? I mean, did you?
Lots of compliments.
Feedback, what was the feedback? I mean, was it?
It's positive. People are glad that it is more like it used to be.
Okay.
It's not going to be what it was 35 years ago, but we, we brought it home and we try to keep it more local.
And I saw people using the bridge.
That was.
I gotta tell you, that bridge is nice. Other than the price tag, that bridge is very nice.
A good connection.
Yes, no, beautiful, beautiful work over there, the bridge is really well done.
Excuse me. So as far as Parks and Recs go, which today is the first day of spring, as I think everyone knows, the part timers are back, they're starting to do the spring cleanups around town properties, a lot of limbs and bees and sticks down, we're cleaning all that up. Public Works guys are sweeping and picking up broken curb, they're going to start spring cleanup as well. Then today, we were dealing with a water leak at the Douglas Library, which I believe we've located and think have corrected it, but it had caused a little bit of damage in the kitchen, and the floor of water was bubbling up, but I'm pretty sure we're, we've solved that. So that was a quick find, and the library just won't let me go, it's just, but that's all I had for the town manager report.
Thank you very much. So Eight on our agenda is old business of American, the ARP Fund, American Rescue Plan, state and local recovery funds, just no need for discussion, Donna, unless there's anything?
I think Andy covered.
Covered what was impactful, yeah.
The security project continue, they're still in the works.
Okay. Eight B, Department of Public Works Action Committee update, I'll, I'll take that. We did meet this week and interviewed the four finalists for the architectural firms to work on the schematics, and, and we are reviewing, as a committee, reviewing and making, as we meet next week, prepare to make a final recommendation to hopefully move to a motion to then present to the town in terms of recommendation, which will then come to the Board of Selectmen. A lot of great work has been done by the folks, by our building committee members who serve within the structure of the Action Committee to really structure the town as well, to structure the right requirements. It's one of the things we asked, that I thought you'd be interested in, is we asked the firms, did we miss anything in our, in sort of the proposal that we put forward? And obviously, the town was part of that, and Richard Stein and Malu were involved in that as well. And the one thing that was very impressive to me is they all said no. In terms of the complexity, the detail that we provided that they responded to was extremely comprehensive, so hopefully encapsulated all the things that were, that were working so hard. So and obviously, Richard did a lot of that work and, and really helped to inform us as to what we should be looking for and considering. And so I look forward to, to reporting on that at our next meeting, and ultimately giving you some more information as to what's behind that. But then we will be looking for the board to take action so we can stick to a relatively aggressive schedule. One of the things we'll talk about tonight, or I'm interested in, and obviously be interested in now and Richard's comments as well, as we look to the town meeting later in April, is there, does it make sense to sort of bring these things together rather than have multiple town meetings? And I think it does. But that's something that we have to talk about and need to talk about, because what we're trying to do here is, we now need to think about how do we take the next three or four weeks and communicate this next step to the public and make sure they're informed, make sure they come out, vote, make sure they understand. And we did have a sort of a misunderstanding of some previous figures that was reported in the River East, it was not an error on the town's part or our part, but ultimately the River East articulated an amount of money, I think a $245,000 number was put out there. And we've continued that at the Board of Selectmen here, and I've reported as well as the discussion in the committee, to be as clear as we can possibly be. That's not, that was not any, an official estimate, that is clearly not even close to what these costs are going to be, not even, not even close. And so how do we then make sure we communicate the reality of this significant next step to the public, and then correlate that to the associated cost, and make sure everyone's as comfortable as they can be so they come out, and with the idea that they are going to support it? Because without that next step, we can't move forward with the DPW, the Public Works Project, we just, we're dead in our tracks. And everything that we've heard in our community and from the public has been, we all agree that we need to fix it, we need to do something. And unless this passes, we can't do anything. And so how do we communicate that? So we want as much time as we can, but we do want to continue to stick to that pretty aggressive filing that Richard had outlined in the previous meeting to the board, because there's so many steps that are going to come next. And it's, it's a very long process. And so a lot going on, but I'm very pleased to report that really good progress has been made, and the firms that we're talking to are all very, very good. So I'm very, you know, excited about being able to present that as the, as the next step and an update at our next meeting. Any questions? Richard, anything you wish to add now? Any both on the, okay, thank you. Okay, Mr. Tierney, Eight C, any other old business you wish to bring before the board?
No, sir, Mr. Tierney.
Anyone on the board having old business? Thank you so much. Mr. Tierney, I'll turn it to you for Section Nine, new business.
New business, item A, approve Hebron Elementary School Roof Replacement Project Construction Drawings, Specifications, and Cost Estimates. So, approve Hebron Elementary School Roof Replacement. PC, attach correspondence from the Hebron Board of Education and the Building Committee regarding the approval of the Hebron Elementary School Roof Replacement Project Construction Drawings, Specifications, and Cost Estimate. The Board of Selectmen's approval is required at this time for their motion to follow.
Okay, thank you very much. We have a motion, Mr. Larson?
Sure. Both the Hebron Board of Selectmen approved the construction drawings, specifications, and cost estimate compiled by prior architecture for the Hebron Elementary School Roof Replacement Project, and that number is 067-0043RR dated March 3, 2025, as required by the state grant process.
Thank you. So for discussion, I did take the liberty of asking Mal and Richard to attend, if there's anything within the scope of this that you feel you want to share before we vote, anything at all with the move, because I know you guys are knee-deep in the project. You're welcome to add any comment to facilitate a discussion.
The only thing I would say, and not specifically about this, is we will cover the process as we speak about Gilead Building School Roof, to process the.
Okay, yeah, just, I know there's a lot of moving parts with the move, so always happy to add more detail if needed. I need to make sure that's clear, to see if someone's listening for the first time.
Yeah.
Or?
Yeah, Richard's got it. 1,154,705 is the total cost. Town Hebron currently receives 55.36% reimbursement of eligible items, and I'll, I'll speak to that later, for eligible items.
Andy, do you think it would be prudent to add a friendly amendment into the motion to reflect the total cost and then a reference to the fact that it'll be offset by state reimbursement? It's up to you if you're more comfortable.
I mean, what is, what do the other members think? It's just, you know, somebody just reading this, I just don't want to say, you know, what did they approve? They're, they're approving expenditures, but there's nobody saying what's the expenditure was.
Why don't we make a friendly, why don't you make a friendly amendment with the total amount, and then, and you did, Richard, did you have the, I'm sorry, I didn't write down?
Well, I can do the 55.6% reversible.
55.36?
55.36 is the reimbursement rate, yes. Eligible items, which is not the full 1.1. I will send the sheet to Donna, actually, I think Donna may have it.
I don't have it with me, too.
No, no.
No, and that's fine, I mean, it's just, it gives some sort of.
Great.
Sure.
Yeah, so the total cost of the roof would be 1,154,705.
And remember, these are estimates.
It does say cost estimate in the motion, yeah.
This, this is why the number's probably not there.
So 1,156?
Is the current estimate.
705.
705, correct.
So with, with the cost estimate at 1,156,705, with a?
54,000, I'm sorry, you were right the first time, I read it backwards, I read it 1,154,705.
Okay, you got this, brother, come on.
So for the total cost estimate to be 1,154,705, with a 55.36% reimbursement rate for eligible items from the state.
Okay, that's good. So the motions are read with that friendly amendment. So additional discussion? Thank you. Move to vote, thank you, Mr. Larson, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye, those opposed, nay, or please note if you wish to abstain.
Dale Larson, aye.
Thank you, Keith.
Keith Pettit, aye.
Thank you, Tiffany.
Tiffany Teely, aye.
Thank you, Claudia.
Claudia Riley, aye.
Thank you, Peter Casper, aye, the motion passes as amended unanimously, thank you very much. Mr. Tierney.
Item Nine, B, new business, approve agreement consulting architects. Attaches a memo from Tom Friend and Matthew Burdo, requesting the selectman to approve a consulting architect concessional services agreement with William W. Brewster, RA of Brewster Architects. Purchasing policy allows for the selectman to approve professional services agreements without the need for a formal bid, Page Six, Section Two dot B dot two, which is attached, and is followed with a proposed motion. And Matt's here tonight to speak to that, if there's any questions.
Okay, I'll read the motion, move that the Hebron Board of Selectmen authorize Andrew J. Tierney, Town Manager, to execute an agreement with William W. Brewster, RA of Brewster Architects to perform architectural consulting services on a quote "on-call" basis. So opening up for a discussion prior to maybe us discussing it. Matt is?
He's here.
He's here. I can't, I don't have my glasses on, I can't see it.
He's hiding in the back.
There you are, really, I really can't see you. Now I can see. So Matt, anything you want to add? You don't have to.
No, I don't.
Okay, that's fine, any discussion from the board?
Go ahead, Dave.
Do we have someone now, or is, I'm just trying to ascertain what precipitated this and what their function would actually be.
So to answer your question?
The cameras can catch you.
What about the X?
Yeah.
No, the town does not have anyone on call for this purpose. The only time in my experience, or actually, this was in the process of reviewing the past approval, when, I noted in the, in the memo, there's two times when this would come into play. One is proposals for new construction or substantial improvements in the Village Green District, so Hebron, Hebron's historic district. And the other one is for commercial or non-single or two-family residential development elsewhere in our business districts. And the reviews that would apply would be, it would be different, right? In the village district, you have the historic guidelines to follow. And in that case, it is mandated by regulation that an application be referred to either an architect, a planner, or a landscape architect, or a compatibility review with the proposal compared to, you know, the existing conditions in the district. So the one time that we did a review of this nature that I'm aware of, and that is since the Hebron zoning regulations have been revised 2018, I think this is a new regulation that applied then, we utilize the services of a certified planner. And my opinion, we have planning, planner on staff, we have. We have a planning commission that is very well versed in planning and zoning. What we lack is an architect that can weigh in on the built environment. Architectural features as applied to, you know, that are kind of important when it applies to historic district.
Okay.
The other element when a review would be called for would be for, as I stated, non-single or two-family development in our various commercial districts. We have the Hebron guidelines, Hebron design guidelines. And they provide a very good basis for design and regulation of various design. But, you know, as we've experienced recently with some proposals, there's input that can come from an architect that is not otherwise covered in the makeup of the planning and zoning commission. So that would be an opportunity to call upon services.
Okay. And one other question. Are fees submitted by the applicant used to cover any of this, or?
So we're actually discussing about that with the planning and zoning commission. So depending on the review, in the scale of the projects, what the commission has the authority to do is charge an applicant for additional review fees that are above and beyond the application requirements as they apply right now. So what my intent is to do is to update our regulations and our application forms. So that is made clear to any applicants who, you know, may come up against that review.
Okay.
And in which case, review fees would be as laid out by Mr. Brewster.
Okay. Thanks. I have questions.
Yeah.
Is this a common practice for rural towns to retain an architect like this?
Yeah, yeah. So in specifically when it comes to rural towns with historic districts. So this gentleman that, you know, I've reached out to is the consultant architect for the town Colchester and their historic district. They have a separate set of guidelines. It's a little bit different because I believe they have a historic district versus a village district. It's different in the way the state statute provides the, or the, provides for communities to regulate activity in those districts. But our regulations call for one of the three options, architect, planner, landscape architect. So we need someone. Previously, I think you folks probably have heard of or crossed paths with Glenn Scholder. He's a planner with a group called Planted Metrics. Does a lot of work for the town and has through the years participated in the affordable housing plan, participated in the Hebron Center Plan, I think it was, and all kinds of work. He used to work with Michael, Michael there. But again, as I stated, like, that's a, you know, it's a planner. And I think that the commission could benefit, the commission agrees that they could benefit from the input from an architect.
That's the length of term of the contract?
So right now, it's, it's just through the fiscal year. You know, we don't have this service set. You know, we don't have an agreement with anybody right now. So I want to make sure that is in place. So in the event that we need it, we call upon it. So it'll be renewed if we decide it's a good fit and, you know, we want to go forward.
Okay, thank you.
What's the anticipated usage?
Of the park?
How often? How often?
Well, again, depends on what kind of applications we get. In fact, it explicitly requires, or it depends on what kind of applications we get. So we can anticipate a handful down Church Street. I mentioned some of the proposals that are going to be coming across the street, across the road from Wild Bills. It would apply to, well, the family development would apply to, you know, commercial development. So it's kind of depends on what we get.
So this wouldn't be, this wouldn't be for town government use. This would only be for private use.
Private use.
And, and so we're making it available as an option, or are you requiring it?
It's required in the village districts. So Hebron Green, Hebron Green, the Hebron Green zoning district. A additional layer of regulation is put on that district in an attempt to preserve its character. And the mechanism that the planning and zoning commission adopted to do that was called the village district guidelines, or whatever it's, however you refer to it. But that's, that's a, that's a, that's a mechanism that is made available via the general statute to municipalities that have a specific area. And ours is specific to the green within our national registered historic district. So proposals that come in there, again, substantial improvement or new construction require a referral to a third-party reviewer for compatibility review.
Okay, I apologize. I think I worded my question wrong. Are we forcing them to use this person versus them going out and finding a random person to use?
Say are, they are an applicant. So this is, this is, this architect is providing the service to the planning and zoning commission, not to the applicant. Maybe I didn't make that clear.
So that?
So an applicant prepares an architecture.
Sorry, that kind of goes back to my first question. Is this person performing services for the town government? Or are they performing services for strictly applicants, members of the public?
So I guess they're providing a service for commission.
Okay.
Who are reviewing applications provided by the public or the?
They're, they're assisting us in the review process.
So then what's?
Layers on as-needed basis.
Okay, so do we have a wild guess on what our anticipated usage of them would be?
Maybe a couple of times a year, I guess. Again, it exclusively depends on what kind of applications.
Yeah, I'm just.
Well, I guess maybe another way to look at the last year's applicants, how many would we have called upon these folks to participate? Yeah, you know.
I have a list of what, you know, what we approved in the last year. I can tell you that it applied to the improvement of the Gale House and to the new structure on the green.
Okay.
It applied to the roofing company building that is behind Main Street on the interior of the green. It will apply to Toomey Crossing project, which would go behind the library. Those are all required. It would apply, say, for example, there's a substantial rehabilitation project proposed for the Oak House, the one West Main at the opposite corner of the intersection here.
Oh, okay.
That would apply there. New construction in that district applies. And then, for example, I did proactively utilize Mr. Brewster's services for the review, an architectural review of the Dollar General Market application.
I guess what I'm, what I'm getting to is, based off of that brief list, I'm assuming that we're going to hit the purchasing mark for three competitive bids. So have, have we looked at multiple architects and this is the lowest rates for the town?
No, no, this was, this, I, I requested this, this proposal having knowledge of his work in town of Colchester and his design services provided to the town. What is it, Lebanon, in his improvement of what is the library expansion there?
Yeah, just, I, I worry because, you know, they're, they're providing this service and they're providing the service to the town initially. And I understand that you have some, some desire to build back to the applicants, right? But if, if this becomes an obligation to the town and yet that obligation over an annum exceeds the purchasing threshold, where we're basically violating purchasing guidelines by approving someone who may, you know, we, we may have a value of an agreement here over ten thousand dollars or over twenty-five thousand dollars, or I don't know what, you know, it's whatever dollar amount we happen to hit. And, and we're being asked to approve a single person without looking at multiple multiple offers.
That's one way to go about it. We, that's why we attach the purchasing policies on the article list. It allows the board of selectmen to, you can either do it two ways. You can, we can try to get prices for three different firms, but under the recommendation of the town planner, this is kind of like a belt and suspenders, another layer of review to protect the town on a as-needed basis. We really don't have a threshold that when we go out to bid, we're going to give you this much work for a year, twelve-month period.
Yeah, I, I agree, but I think, I think if I was the purchasing manager, which I have been in the past, and, and I have an unknown estimate of work, but I know that it may approach a certain dollar amount. To be on the safe side, I would get three competitive bids first so that whether I pick the lowest one or not, wherever this guy happens to come in, at least I've gone through the process. I don't, I don't wait to hit the ten thousand dollar mark that I've already, or the dollar threshold is. I don't wait to hit that threshold and say, oh, well, now I have to go out and get competitive bids, even though I've been paying this guy up until this point. And we may end up going, having to go out and secure a completely different firm. And now we've had two firms over the course of the year. If that person is not successful in having a competitive bid. So I just, I, I worry about approving it sight unseen without seeing some other competitive rates out there because I have no idea what the competitive rate for an architect or planner is. That's not really my, my purview.
Were you opposed? You got three prices, Matt?
Well, somewhat, somewhat. I mean, it's a fair amount of work that goes into the solicitation of that service. I think we're talking about an extreme, you know, if we're worried about the purchasing policy. So, I mean, so what is the top, the high end of the services? Hundred and ninety-two dollars an hour or something like that? I forget exactly what it is.
Yeah, and honestly, that's, I think that's all that we're really looking for is, I mean, he provided an hourly rate and, and this agreement is based off of, you know, you know, hourly compensation for different projects or whatever. I mean, if we just go out and get hourly rates from different companies to kind of see, see what kind of comparison there is. Because like I said, I mean, I, I think it's, I think it's great that all that was included for our information, but I mean, that may be seventy-five dollars an hour more than the average. I, I don't know because I'm not familiar with the planning world.
I think it's important to consider, you know, my, you know, the qualifications of this individual is proximity to, you know, resident Lebanon, experience, all his work, I shouldn't say all his work, but a fair amount of work within, you know, the area. So understands the context. I mean, I'm not opposed to going out and trying to understand what competitive rates are for architects, but there is a quality component, you know, and a fit component. I think that the planning and zoning commission is comfortable with now.
Yeah, and, and I agree that that will be factored into a final decision by the board of selectmen, but I'm looking at a nine hundred thousand dollar shortfall in the budget. And so this, the dollar amount per hour is important to me.
I guess I've got some hourly rates and we'll bring it back.
Any other question?
No. All right, so we're going to table the motion based on additional information being developed. You? All right, Mr. Tierney, that moves us to 9C.
Okay, 9C, shooting. This is local option for use of alternative motor vehicle depreciation schedule. That's his information from the assessor in Craig regarding the local option for use of alternate motor vehicle depreciation schedule, which is on top of the Hebron's assessor, your resident, to provide more information and respond to questions and it's followed up with a motion.
Why don't we, we're going to read the resolution. And then we'll ask, then you can jump in, provide some context, and then we'll open it for discussion.
You always give me the long ones, Mr. Tierney.
This is your specialty.
It is my specialty.
So go right ahead. You take your time.
Be it resolved that the Hebron Board of Selectmen approve adoption of the local option allowed under HB 7067, section 7B, to elect to apply a modified schedule of depreciation as outlined in HB 7067, section 7B. With respect to motor vehicles based upon manufacturer's suggested retail price of such motor vehicles, provided no motor vehicle shall be assessed at an amount less than five hundred dollars.
See, another perfect job. Thank you. And thank you for answering my questions to give us some additional information. But before we open it up for discussion, we would love to hear from you.
So there was a change in legislation that led how we value motor vehicles, starting with the 2024 grand list year. Prior to the 2024 grand list year, we used clean retail. We were directed by the state to value motor vehicles using clean retail and the source for evaluation came from J.D. Power and ADA Guide, not from Kelly Blue Book, not from where. So clean retail resulted in, you know, sometimes fluctuations in value, as we've seen over the last several years. And, and what was developed was new legislation that directs us, beginning with 2024 grand list year, to value motor vehicles or to value motor vehicles based on the MSRP from your manufacturer and then go into a fixed depreciation schedule. So year over year, you're going to see a reduction in value of the motor vehicle bottoming out at the nineteen-twenty year mark. And what happened was that there was a significant, after all the towns implemented this new legislation, there was a significant decrease in value in motor vehicles. And it was most impactful, obviously, in, in larger cities where there are more motor vehicles. But what they found was, it was, it was a charm to be quite a hardship for, for many towns and cities. In reaction to the feedback that came from towns, they implemented local option. Prior to this local option, all towns had a fixed depreciation schedule of eighty-five percent. So you take MSRP of your motor vehicle and then you apply a fixed fifteen percent reduction off the top year and then twenty percent, twenty-five, five percent reduction each year. With the local option, instead of going to eighty-five percent reduction, it's a ninety percent reduction. So you're taking ten percent off the value versus fifteen percent off the value, bottoming out at twenty percent in years fifteen through nineteen. So you're not taking as much of a reduction. By implementing the local option, what we found is that we had a little more than a thirteen million dollar loss in motor vehicle value in prior years, where usually we see substantial growth. And by implementing the local option, we would add about ten million dollars back into the grand list. We'd still have a reduction by not as much. I'd also mentioned that along with this legislation, residential trailers are now exempt. Snowmobiles are now exempt. So there are also some motor vehicles that have been removed from taxation, which has also contributed to the reduction. So the question then becomes, do you want to adopt a local option, which does ninety percent and five percent per year down to twenty, the years fifteen through nineteen? Or do you want to start with eighty-five percent, taking more of a reduction, and then the grand list stays as it is?
You were kind enough to also provide an impact financially to make this change in terms of, and I was, was it between two and three hundred thousand dollars?
Three forty.
Three forty, okay. And then also, one of the things that I thought was very helpful, assuming everyone saw it, but just for the public's certification, the, you know, how does this, how are other towns reacting in our, our community, in our, you know, in our local community? Not necessarily the entire state, but sort of what's happening around us. You have provided a map to allow us to understand, are we an outlier? By making this change, because in effect, it's bringing, you know, we have an opportunity to reduce the taxes. And that's a good thing. And this tax, you know, the year that we're facing some increases. But at the same time, the damage that it potentially does to the town, it reverberates over time across the entire budget. And that's also meaningful to discuss. So I, I do appreciate all the extra work that you did to make it a little bit easier, at least for me, to understand this because we do take very seriously an opportunity to sort of weigh the balance between a residence and the town, ultimately trying to come up with something that we think is in the best interest, long-term, in the entire community, which in this case, we're being asked to consider effectively more income for the town and less of the savings for the residents. But we've just heard that there's significant impact on the town if we leave it as is. So let's open it up. Are there discussions and questions? Oh, do you want to add something?
Yeah, so, and I want, I want Suzanne to back me up. So we're not, we're not really reducing the tax, you're shifting the taxes, the loss of the motor vehicle to the property. That's the real reason some of these municipalities are trying to recruit some of them. I mean, that's one way to look at it. I mean, that's one way to look at it. That's the towns that I've talked to. You can, you can fill in on that.
Well, it's a question. Some towns are using it to close the gap. Some towns are implementing their local option and not making any movement to their mill rate. Um, you know. Also, when I provided the map, I tried to note towns that went through a revaluation. This year, um, if they went through a revaluation this year or last year, it would have already seen an increase in evaluations. So. They might have more room. Keep in mind also that it's not a one and done. If you chose to not implement it this year, you can always implement it in future years. Some towns didn't implement it for this year, but are doing it for next year. It's a local option that can be addressed anytime, but it is on.
Yeah, that was, that was my question. Because when we do eventually switch back. In in your estimation, would would realigning with normal or with statute at that point? Would realigning with it be better off in a revale year to to lessen impact to taxpayers? Or because I understand we're doing it this year to kind of lessen the impacts to to us. But we're we're not really lessening the impact to taxpayers because for for those people that rent and the vehicle is their only property tax. We are taxing them more. Um, so.
Implement it now is not a one year thing. If you implement it, it's going forward.
Yeah, I it. And so like, that's the thing, you know, I I got, I got two more years where I have to think about when am I going to unimplement this? Do it? Is it, were we better off doing it in a revale year or waiting until the year after the revale year? To unimplement it, I guess, is my question about recommendation.
Well, it all depends on, that's, that's up to you. Uh, because again, it's something that you could, if you implemented, you may wish to continue to. And because you're just going to, this is how we're going to do it. We're going to do it going forward. Um, or not. And then you have the option of changing how uh the depreciation schedule going forward.
I I I think that would have a negative impact on Hebron as far as the rental community, because if they're seeing a much smaller. Taxation impact in other uh towns that adopt the statute. Um, and and we're saying, well, we're not going to do that. We're going to value things slightly higher and and have a longer depreciation schedule and everything else. Again, I I know it's a niche group, but it, they are residents of Hebron and and we need to look out for for our renters. Um, are they going to say? Maybe not for a couple hundred bucks, but. If their, if their lease comes up, hey, maybe it's time to move to East Hartford. Or maybe it's time to move somewhere else. Um, I I don't. That's why I want to have a plan to migrate out.
Keep in mind, there's also motor vehicle cap, uh, cap, uh, thirty-two point four six. So um, some towns, especially surrounding, because they're more rural, may have a lower. Uh, mill rate, in which case the mill rate for motor vehicle may be lower. Um, for other towns or cities, um, they're at the thirty-two point four six. So again, five percent depends on the type of vehicle, right? Five percent can can go both ways. Um, for larger towns that have a larger commercial base. That have more commercial vehicles. They have a different impact because they have higher valued vehicles. That they're shifting it to. And again, when you have more of a commercial base, that's uh. You know, you're, you're getting it more from uh commercial revenue, commercial motor vehicles versus we don't have a lot. Commercial. Relative to other town.
My issue is. Point blank. Our property taxes, of course, are number three in in the United States. You got New uh. New Jersey, Illinois, and then Connecticut, the highest property taxes in the country. And dumping more load on the property owners. I think it 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 becomes unbearable. Uh. The renters, if they have to pay a couple more dollars for their motor vehicles. I think it's fair. Uh, we need to try to, however we can, give our property owners some sort of a break. And between the power company bills and everything else going on, this state is giving no breaks whatsoever. And as a senior, uh, quite literally, I'll be the first to say I'm actually being priced out of the state.
So I understand it's not my position to tell you to advocate for or against it. I'm just presenting to you what the options are.
Yep.
And what the impact would be.
So then, in layman's terms. Which would be. The most fair to the actual property owners? Which option? We get more money from which one on motor vehicles?
Well, again, you're adding about $10 million to the motor vehicle. Portion of the grand list, um, which has a fixed thirty-two point four six mill rate at this point. Until such point in time where if or when the mill rate drops below it. And it's more flexible, so.
That is which option?
Well. Either way, if if you, if you implement the local option where it goes from ninety percent instead of eighty-five, so it's ninety. Uh, ninety, eighty-five versus eighty-five, eighty, et cetera. Then you're going to add $10 million to the motor vehicle portion of the grand list, which adds. Three twenty-three forty, additional taxes, three hundred forty thousand.
Thank you.
Out of a, uh, what is your budget? What are your, what are your budgetary needs? Forty-two million?
Other questions, go ahead.
Yeah, Suzanne, thank you for your presentation. Very informative. But I like to bring it down, or bring it up actually to the, like a thousand foot view. You know, you talk about grand lists and and values and all that.
Sure.
But it, so families in Hebron, they're all sitting down at the kitchen table trying to figure out how they're going to pay their bills. Can you give us some real life examples of how the tax impact would look like? Particularly make and model year? So we can see the dollars and cents behind the proposals.
Uh, I apologize, I didn't bring the example with me, but if you had a motor vehicle that um. Like that had, I can, I can step away, get the information, bring it right back. Um, but I can say that, again, you're paying. If you have a $50,000 motor vehicle with a ninety percent reduction, now you have forty-five thousand, you take seventy percent of that. Um, you're paying somewhere around a thousand dollars in taxes. If you go with the eighty-five percent, it brings it down to like nine hundred and twenty-five dollars. So for a newer motor vehicle, you could be talking saving a hundred dollars on your taxes.
In one year.
In one year. Um, excuse me, I said a thousand, um, a couple hundred, a hundred dollars in your taxes. My apologies.
For scenarios.
Right. For an older motor vehicle. You know, where you have something that is maybe a $5,000 assessment for the depreciation. You're saving maybe twenty dollars. Twenty dollars is still twenty dollars, right? Twenty dollars can feed a family for a day.
Yeah, all right. I just wanted to make sure that we're sensitive that, that we see what the real life impacts are. Yeah, when people are figuring out their budgets.
Well, I understand, but you know, the reality is, at the end of the day. The town still needs a certain dollar amount to function. And uh. To to sadly, the, the only way, the, the, the only revenue streams that we as a town really have. Are property taxes, whether it be, you know, owned property or motor vehicles. I mean, there's. You know, the, the town can't go out and start selling widgets. We don't have that, that ability. You know, so it still all falls back onto the property owners and. We need to try to to at least spread that out as much as we can possibly spread it to make it fair for all of our, of of our. People in our community. You know, you just can't keep coming back to the the household owner.
I I I agree. I agree, Dan. I, you know, I'm not, I'm not trying to, you know, oppose it in this instant. Because this is a rough year. Um, we have a lot of economic factors, you know. People, people are having a rough time out there. So, you know, I I I don't want to. Necessarily take the biggest bite out of them, but. At some point, you know, the economy is cyclical. At some point, things will improve. And at that point, they will say, why are we on the heavier schedule versus the lighter schedule? I just want to have an exit plan.
Right. And there, and Suzanne, there is one, right? So could we choose this? It's not like we're locked in in perpetuity, right?
Well, that's something you would have to vote to rescind an ordinance. I mean, if you implement a local ordinance, typically they're not. That in my experience has shown personally or professionally. But. Most towns are looking to, most towns have adopted it. Um, but again, I think they're looking at. They're looking at the loss of income that they encountered with the grand list. They're looking to recoup that.
But but the ordinance can also be worded that we incorporate this plan for three years.
Well, that's not something that was put forth as part of the local option. I mean, it's as presented there is that you. You implement the local option um to go with the depreciation schedule. I. Haven't had any feedback that it's something that, that would be temporary. You have to ask.
So bottom line, we're looking at a potential additional revenue of $300,000 to the forty-two million dollar town budget. Going with this proposal. And then the other on the flip side is, we're looking at an additional tax burden on the household of. Low end twenty dollars in a year to high end of a thousand dollars a year. Is that right?
For a motor vehicle.
Right. So that is, am I correct in saying?
Two. Rather speaking, yes, I mean.
Sure, you could, yeah.
Like you.
Well, you could buy a camper, you could buy a $350,000 camper.
Yeah, absolutely.
That is going to.
Yeah.
Bring you much more of a, a tax bill, a higher tax bill.
But based on our current grant list, you're talking that the three hundred forty thousand reflects our current grant list. So it incorporates everything from a five hundred dollar car to. To difference car.
So if you're looking for it to offset a burden on, so, so your question was. How does that translate to other parts of the grand list? Then you're asking yourself, how does that addition? Are you adding that income and looking to offset it somewhere else? Where does the reduction look as far as real estate or personal property? And that looks like it comes out to be somewhere between a quarter of a third of a mil. Based on the added income.
All right. So at this juncture, are you looking for an option?
Well, that, well, that that's the thing. So this, this has to be an ordinance in order to be in effect.
The local ordinance that you adopt, yes.
Right. So, I mean, we have a motion, but that motion is not going to automatically create the ordinance. So I don't know how we want to handle the motions on the day.
Or we have to pass the.
We have a resolution and then it would then translate into a separate ordinance. Uh, by passing the resolution, are we creating an, or we're not creating an ordinance? That's the question. We passed the resolution, do we create an ordinance?
That's what we're discussing.
That's not what I was told. I was told that they made this a local legislative body, which was the Board of Select that could approve this.
Well, no, 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 because Ken, Ken very much pushed back on me that the Board of Selectmen is not. The legislative body in Hebron. He very much said that to me when I made a similar argument.
Yeah, there are, there are times when they are and they're.
There, there are times when they are and there are times when they're not, and that's specified in the charter. But if this isn't ordinance and not. Just the local option by resolution, if it's an ordinance, there's a process that we need to go through. To adopt the ordinance, we have to hold a public hearing.
Yep.
After the public hearing, the selectmen can adopt the ordinance, but if it is an ordinance, we need to go through that process.
So with the local. It's a local option. I mean, other towns have adopted it through their Board of Selectmen.
Well, that that depends on what they consider their legislative body. So the the argument that Attorney Slater and I had was that. That in in a certain statute, it said that. Um, the Board of Selectmen was seen as the legislative body. But in our charter, it says that the Board of Selectmen is not the legislative body, that it's a representative town meeting. Now, I argued that the statute overrode, but you know. Um, that was something that he was adamant about it, not in that particular instance. And so. I believe that it would be the same here, so.
All I can tell you is from the map. And my other colleagues, other town managers and administrators. That the way the state put this down was fast track, so the town was adopted under this, this stuff.
So it's not an ordinance.
That's what I was told, but I mean, if there's a question of it, I I'm not.
I'd like to get clarification because if we're adopting it tonight, I would like an end date. And if it's going to ordinance, I would like to discuss with Attorney Slater, the options of putting an end date in an ordinance.
Yeah, and that's a great question with respect to taxation. Are we the deciding body? I don't think so. It's a good question.
Okay, so. All right. Thank you very much. So Sandy, let's just clarify. All right. Thank you. Thank you. Great job. Thank you so much. Very helpful. Very. Thank you. Good questions, good dialogue. Mr. Tierney, we are moving on to nine E.
For two.
Oh, we're, we're tabling it.
Okay, but are we going to have him check?
Yes. Okay. I'm sorry, you didn't hear that. I, we're, those other people. Yes, he's going to confirm and we'll bring it back.
Okay.
Yeah, okay. Yes, nine, nine D. Members of the Economic Development Commission will be in attendance to discuss the proposed Hebron Development Commission's economic vision. Document and vision statement attached with the Board of Selectmen. So we have our economic development chair. I don't know, Matt's going to accompany you up here.
No, Matt's not going to accompany me unless I need his backup.
So before we get started, I want to thank Michelle. She had reached out. Uh, with a great suggestion that we um coordinate. Our discussions moving forward relative to economic development. Um, she created a vision statement with the idea that then the board would review the vision statement. See if we are in agreement with that vision statement to collaborate more effectively with economic development. And ultimately to support her and her endeavors. So I thank you for um. Initiating that discussion uh and the time you spent to put together the document that is in your packet. Or was provided to you in in uh prior to the meeting. And so we are very excited that you are here. And um, did you bring, you didn't bring like coffee or anything?
Uh, you know, so I just came from the National Honor Society of Dutch Diner Money, and I gave them all of my coffee and baked goods, so.
All those in favor, please take your. Thank you for talking. Thank you. So the floor is yours.
Uh, thank you. So, yeah, so um. You know, the E D C has gone through uh pretty significant uh turnover and changes, I feel like in the last, in the last year or so, since I've um. Been a part of it and especially in the leadership roles, the chair. And um, as we got past the marketing. Project that had been kind of going on when I took over, um, it started to move into the next phase of like what the E D C was working on. We worked a little bit on the um. You know, the chamber partnership, which we're actively working with still, but um. I am struggling a little bit, and I think so are the, you know, the new board members of just trying to make sure that we have the right scope of what we're supposed to be working on and. Making sure that if we're pushing through things to the Board of Selectmen, that we're pushing through things that you want to see. Um, and then, of course, we want to make sure that we're supporting um. What we have been able to find in different documents, whether it was the, you know, the town center um reports or the, the um, you know, the charter or the marketing visions, like we kind of combed through all of that stuff. To see what it looks like the town wants for economic development. We know that economic development helps with the bottom line, right? We know that the tax dollars that come in from businesses are. Valuable to the town, will continue to be valuable to the town, will continue to be more valuable to the town because um, we don't have. A lot of opportunity, I think you were saying before, Mr. Larson, like, there's not a lot of revenue streams, right?
Yeah.
Um, so businesses, this is the revenue stream, but at the same time, we don't want to kill the businesses. Um, we want to make sure that we're bringing in the right businesses. We want to make sure we're bringing in the businesses that the town, community want to see. Um, and that will also ultimately contribute to the bottom line. So we put together this kind of vision statement, which is certainly high level and can, you know, can be drilled. can be drilled down into further if needed, to try to put together what the values are and the goals are of the EDC so that we can better assist and do our job. Because I feel like right now, and a lot of it is just because of turnover and getting people in there, but we're not doing a whole lot. You know, we, we started working with the, with the chamber, which is incredible. It can be very valuable. But we need more. And I don't wanna get in too deep with anything until we're all on the same page. Uh, so that was, that was kind of the purpose of putting this together and I don't know how much, I mean, I know you guys all have this. So I don't really wanna like go through it with you unless there's anything specific. I, I mean, I think that the overall theme that you're gonna see here, right, is we're looking to support small businesses we have in town. Yes, I know that includes myself, but it's something that needs to happen. And we need to encourage the business, businesses coming into town that we want to see. I think the situation with Dollar General is just such an excellent example, right? The town did not want that Dollar General for the most part to come in. So they, and they voiced that very clearly. And I think that when we look at the small businesses in town, like I think that's what they wanna see. So as an EDC, we wanna support that the best way we can. Small businesses are often much more financially challenged than a large business coming in, right? You're, you're scraping together loans and, and favors and all kinds of stuff to start your business. And as a town, I think we have more that we can offer. Maybe not on a financial status, but we have things that we can offer these small businesses. And that's kind of what we tried to outline here is that, you know, we, we would like to bring in more small businesses. We would like to bring in people who live in town, who wanna start businesses, right? And strengthening that kind of community environment and the give back to the community and the collaboration with the community. But in order to do that, and this is really the piece that I think is so important that we're all on the same page with is that we, we need to make sure that we're giving them some advantages to being in Hebron and being a small business starting in Hebron. And right now, we don't have a whole lot to offer them in that. And I think that we have the ability to offer them things that don't necessarily cost the town money. Um, I think we just need to work together with some of the other boards and see how we can do things to help them a little bit. And there are things we can do, you know, we, we could do ribbon cutting ceremonies, we could do press releases, we could do a liaison to the, to the Planning and Zoning Commission, which is, which is a challenge for most small businesses, trying to navigate that. You know, talking to somebody, maybe we could, for a new small business, we could waive the sign permit fee or, you know, something little that helps encourage these small businesses and holds their hand a little bit along the way, giving them maybe a mentor within the town and having them, you know, the, the new small business that's coming in over at the, the old ranch house location, you know, these are friends of mine. So I've been working with her. I was here a couple of weeks ago with her, introducing her to everyone here so that she has the contacts that she needs. When you come into town and you don't know these things, it can be really overwhelming. You know, a lot of times that I've found this myself multiple times over already, I don't know what I don't know, right? So I'm gonna go put a sign in the ground and Matt's like, hey, you gotta do some stuff first before you can do that. But I don't know that, right? Cuz this is my first time doing it. I'm the small business, or, you know, my friend Julie's the small business, or Sean and Bria are the small business that we want. But we've never done this before. So I think giving them a little bit of a toolbox that we can supply would really go a long way in this. And it doesn't have to be, here's a grant, here's, you know, free things, but it can be time. And I think our volunteers that we have in town can give us that time, you know? It would be great, I can think of, I would have benefited so much from just a conversation with somebody on the Planning and Zoning Committee at the beginning. Like trying to help me understand what we were trying to do and, um, you know, just being able to reach out and know how to navigate the system a little bit would be really helpful. So I think, I think that's really what we're aiming for here. And, and we wanna make sure that our vision is the same as your vision. I mean, if, if the town and the Board of Selectmen by extension's vision is to bring in, you know, big box stores to Hebron, I mean, this isn't, it works. But I don't think that's what it is. So, so I think if we can agree on what we're looking for, then it will give us more, um, more ability to, to move forward.
I commend this. I, I, being a past small business owner, I know what you're talking about. Now, granted, mine was in construction, so it's a little bit different, but still it's the same.
Still the same, right?
Yeah. And, and what I doing, yeah, and what I'm doing, okay, am I against some weird planning and zoning law that I don't know about? And it's always in the back of your mind, am I doing it right or am I gonna get somebody knocking on the door saying, you can't do this? So I, I commend you. I think it's a great document. We are all guilty. Part of it's because we're all volunteers. We really need to probably find time, which is something nobody has, to sit down with, with you, with planning and zoning, because I many times don't feel that all of our entities are on the same page.
Correct.
And I brought it up before, uh, all we gotta do is find some time.
Yep.
I'm not sure what part of that 28 hour day we're gonna steal it out of.
I agree. I, you know, yeah, I, I agree. I think it is, it's tough, but I, I think it is, it is really important. And, and the, the businesses are an important part of the town.
They're a very important part of the town and they need to know that they're appreciated. And, and Hebron's a tough town to do business in.
And unfortunately, we have a reputation. So I feel like we have, we have some work we could do to help.
There's that. There's also just the logistical layout of Hebron.
Absolutely.
You know, the north end people go north, the south end people go south.
Yep.
And so a lot of local businesses really survive off of the people in the central part of town. Uh, and, and I can't say they're wrong. I mean, you know, once you get up, you know, past Hills Farm, you're 10 minutes, five minutes from Manchester. You know, that, that's just a logistical reality.
Yes.
You know, uh, and they've got everything you want. You know, you come to Hebron and they may not have it. So then you gotta turn around and go somewhere anyway. So I, I don't know how to fix that problem. You probably can't.
We have so much going for us though, as far as environmental.
And that's what we need to sell.
And that's what we need to sell. And if you go back and you look at, um, you know, the marketing study that we did, that's, that's up there. Like I think it's bullet point C or D is the environmental piece of this. And bringing people in to the town in order to have them use the airline trail and, you know, go biking and then by extension, they're visiting your businesses in town, right? If I bring somebody into town because they want to get sourdough bread, they're gonna then go to the gas station cuz they need gas before they get home. And, you know, maybe then they're gonna stop at Ted's to get something else. And, you know, you're looking for that kind of round robin of stuff. And we do have a ton available to us as far as natural resources. So, you know, that is something that we should be touting in conjunction with the town and the businesses that are happening within it. So I think there are ways to do it. We just need work on it. And, you know, that's why we're working with the chamber, so that we can create the business directory that we need to create so that we can communicate with businesses that we need to communicate with, so that we can start talking about this together, right? Like it shouldn't just be me and Matt and the EDC discussing what these businesses need. You know, we need to have a way to start communicating and advertising on behalf of the businesses because we have the ability to do that and it doesn't cost us any money. Uh, you know, just a community newsletter, you know, Andy's sending out, um, updates anyways for, to the town. Like why can't an update go out saying that snipity salon is having, you know, a back to school sale or, you know, we, we should be promoting these businesses. They, they promote the things that are happening in this town. They're the ones that are sponsoring your T-ball teams, your lacrosse teams, your goalie uniforms, you know? They're the ones that are supporting that. So we need to find a way to support them. And we have options. It doesn't have to be dollars, you know, we just need to figure out what they are. And I think each commission, each board probably has the ability to give us something. You know, they, they probably all have the option to add, you know, Board of Selectmen, maybe, maybe, we don't have that many new businesses. Like maybe one of you could take each new business and, and just talk to them, go meet them, tell them, you know, this is, this is who you can talk to for this. And let me introduce you to Andy and, you know, like bring them around. It's what, an hour of your time? I know, 28 hour day, but we don't have 50 new businesses. Like, give them a liaison, let them talk to the board planning before they go to the meeting so that they're not nervous, you know, and they know what to expect.
There's businesses that have come in. In fact, there was, there's a new business that opened up in Ted's Plaza that I didn't even know was coming
Right.
until after they were there. You know, somebody says, oh, what'd you see?
Right.
No, I didn't.
You know, my friend Julie, who, who also just joined the EDC, thank you for that, um, is, is the one who's, who's taking over the ranch house property. Her and her husband, Rick Abel, live in town. And they, um, you know, I was the one that took her over to Ted's to meet John, so that she can set up a house account so that she knows that she can buy what, her things that she runs out of, which she's going to every day. I go to Ted's more than once a day. And, you know, we have a house account with them. So we buy the things that we run out of Ted's, like there, there's gotta be, this is the restaurant industry, but there's gotta be something like that for most, you know, if, if you're in the construction business, right, shouldn't we be meeting Brian down at Ace? Like, you know, we wanna make sure that people have the connections they need. It's what's gonna make them feel like they're part of this community and that's what we need. The businesses to feel like they're part of the community so that they give back.
Are you next or?
Well, I, I don't know. How brutal are you gonna be?
You know, you're on a roll tonight, so I'll let you lead and I'll follow up.
I'm just gonna apologize right from the start and say that I, I, I agree with Dan. I love the document 99.9%. I only have two things that I'm gonna say. Thank you very much for all that you do for the town, not just volunteering, but, you know, small business and everything. And I couldn't agree with you more, like being able to have somebody there to walk a prospective business owner through is a fantastic idea. These are the ideas that we hope becomes part of the new culture with the EDC. And again, we support that culture and we would love to see more of you. I don't know, we had discussed whether it was quarterly, semi-annually or something like that, but we would just love to hear from the EDC whenever they feel like presenting. With that being said, uh, you know, some, some things that had, that had come up previously and, and I did not see in the document, so I just kind of wanted to throw out there. You know, in your vision statement, you talk about fostering sustainable growth that serves the needs of the residents, existing businesses. I get it. Residents, existing businesses. But also I feel like this is a wildly overlooked thing is transient customers. We are on 66 and 85. We have 20,000 cars going between Middletown and Wyndham or stores every day. That's 20,000 chances to get five bucks. Why don't we have more? I mean, if I'm on the way home, I'm not gonna stop at a restaurant to have dinner and then go home to my wife and kids. But I will stop and get flowers or stop and get some, uh, paint cuz I need to paint the bathroom. I will get stuff like that. We need to be looking at businesses that cater to, I mean cater to, but at least have a product that is transient, that somebody will take on the way home.
Yep.
The same thing, you know, we, we've seen it time and time again in, in the plan of conservation development and other things. Yes, our, our geography and our natural assets are a huge, you know, valuable commodity here in Hebron. But we are not taking advantage of it the way we should. We have people come and use the airline trail and then they go home. Because nobody wants to get off their bike all sweaty and go in and have a sit down meal at Gina Marie's. But they will grab a coffee and some baked goods on their way home, you know, cuz they don't have to like sit around in sweaty clothes for an hour. So I think we need to take a more creative approach of seeing what it is that these people need and start when businesses come up to us and they have those products. I 100% agree with you. We need to bend over backwards. If you need somebody to walk with them and show them around, give me a call.
And I think that, and I hope Matt doesn't kill me for saying this, but I think that we, we need to, if you're looking at trying to pull in trendy customers, the first thing we need to look at is the parking patterns that we have in this town.
Yes, yes.
Because the reason we don't have transient customers 99% of the time is because they have no idea where to go.
Yes, I agree.
So it, and, and I know that I'm drawing from my own personal experience, right? But like, you have seen my signs, I'm sure you have, of me trying and begging and pleading and videos and trying to get people to understand that there is more than four parking spots in front of the flower girl.
Yes.
And it is borderline impossible. We have a public parking lot across the street from the library and the flower girl that has no sidewalk or no crosswalk to get across the street. So there's no way to cross back over. And also the parking sign is smaller than your signs that you have in front of you right now. So the traffic patterns and the, the flow of traffic is not, it does not support that right now. It does not support a secondary main street. It does not support, um, what you're talking about having. Now, putting the bridge in is huge, right? Because now if we can get people to those back parking lots, Pendleton becomes a secondary main street easily. You've got available real estate back there right now, right? So you have the option to bring these people in, but we have got to look at how we're getting people to these parking lots because a blue parking sign past the library is not gonna cut it.
Yeah, I, I, I agree. I mean, I couldn't agree with you more. The, the signage, you go to any other town and they have the, the brown signs on the corner of the street that says whatever business name.
Exactly. And we have none of that.
Haven't seen one of those lately.
Right.
And coming off of 66, if you're trying to get to the back parking lot behind the library.
Unless you're familiar with it.
Not friendly. If you got a truck, guess what? Two trucks don't pass well in the night.
Now, part of the flow in the back is being addressed in one of the brands, correct?
No.
Back, like.
We're addressing parking.
On the grants. Sure. But, um.
It's a step in the right.
It's a step in the right direction. But no, and I agree with you. And I think, and I think that when we're looking at this, like I, I honestly, because I don't know anything about this, I don't know which town commission it is that handles this, but like, yeah, we gotta look at this. Because you're right, we have, you want transient customers? We have one drive-through in town and no way to build another one.
Exactly, exactly. And, and, you know, um, unfortunately, I think that that's something that, that residents, you know, when, when I say servicing transient company, uh, customers, or I say companies that have drive-throughs, they instantly think of big box. And, and I get that. But you know what? Uh, three brothers, two brothers, two and a half brothers. One brother and two stepbrothers in Marlboro has a drive-through. You know, I mean, I know it's for coffee, but still, it's, it's a step in the right direction.
If we had a spot for it, I would be out there with a jackhammer myself trying to put a drive-through in for the flower girl. Like we would, we would kill it doing, doing drive-through. But we just don't have the space for it. So, but there are options, right? We have land that's still available. So we have places to do this and we have parking. We just need to get them there.
Yeah, and, and, and I think, you know, that's something, again, I, I think the document is great. I would make that one adjustment to the vision statement so that.
Totally on board.
So that we like have that in the front of our mind, not just in this one meeting of, look, we, we do have a great location here. We need to focus on transient customers.
And walkability is something that people are currently looking for. You know what I mean? Like it doesn't have to be just transient during the week. I hear what you're saying, right? But I will tell you that from my own personal experience, I've been trying to capture the Ram traffic for three years.
Yes.
And they don't stop, they don't, they, they don't stop. They're on their way somewhere. They're not stopping.
They're only going through a drive-through.
They're only going through a drive-through, exactly. But we are bringing in customers on the weekends, right? I'm bringing in, I, I've got a 15 to 2,000 person traffic count weekends. These people are walking around town when it's nice out. They're walking around town. And if we continue to expand on that walkability, which we already have started, right? That bridge is a huge step in the right direction. So if we continue to expand on that walkability, I think you do have huge potential for retail spaces that are gonna bring in tax dollars, um, up on Pendleton and even in the space behind the library.
I, I agree. And I think sidewalks, especially we have, you know, several currently undeveloped parcels in town uh, on Main Street. I think that sidewalks through that areas would, would show potential businesses the value of, hey, like, you know, we, we can capture a lot more here.
People like to be able to drive and park their car and walk around and do multiple things at a time. And we see that just at the flower girl with only our three locations that we have right there, right? So if people are willing to drive 30, 45 minutes to come and just buy bread and have lunch, they're certainly gonna drive 30 to 45 minutes to buy bread, have lunch, go visit the jewelry store, go see the. They're certainly gonna drive thirty to forty five minutes to buy bread, have lunch, go visit the jewelry store, go see the potter, go to the art gallery, you know, whatever else may be down there.
Yeah, and, and like I said, the only other thing that I would, that I would change is, is on your strategic goals about attracting new businesses. Again, add those, those two points of. You know, focus more on transient customers and. The, the geography and the natural assets that we have. We need to find those businesses and products that cater to, I mean, we talk about it in all these P O C D things about ecotourism. But I can tell you right now, there's no ecotourism in Hebrew, there isn't. I mean, people come here for the eco and then they go somewhere else for the tourism. So like, uh, we need to figure out how, how, how that works and what is gonna keep somebody in, you know. A sweatsuit with their bike shoes on.
Well, and there's, you know, there's. That's a great example, like, why don't we have more bike racks downtown?
Right.
You know, like, it's, it's a fantastic example, like, we are off the airline trail and. The bike racks that was behind the library, I don't know where, but it's not, I can't see it right now, so, you know. Maybe putting in more bike racks or putting in more crossings and stuff like that is all, is all part of it, but, um. And, and then there are EDCs in other towns that are, you know, more established and probably in less of a turnover state that. Will go after businesses. You know what I mean? Like, they will actually go and court businesses in. And that is something that is doable as long as we have a vision that's very clear.
Yes.
Um, it's, it's very clear, like, you know, should we be going after a, a bike shop? Okay. Go after some bike shops, right? Um, but we need to, we need to make sure that we're on the same page, because what we can't do is go in as the EDC and be like, hey, you should come to Hebron. Then have them come to, to Hebron and find out that they'd actually, we don't want them.
Right, yeah, I, and, and that's where, again, your liaison plays in, I mean, I think. You know, going out there and courting people, we need to say. These, these are the two or three volunteers in town that are gonna help you.
Right.
Navigate this process because, um, like you said, i- i- it's new to them. Every town has their little nuances. And, um, you know, a, a business may come in thinking, well, this worked for me, you know, and will a mantic. And I slid right through and got all my stuff done, and now I'm in Hebron and it's like, whoa, wait, wait, wait.
Have to do that, yeah, they don't know there's different rules.
Yeah.
I am not a Facebook person. I, I just get way too agitated. But, that being said. Do you think that EDC, would, would, would it be? Would it? Be wise to maybe put out a questionnaire on Facebook to say, hey, what types of businesses do you think are lacking in, in Hebrew? Uh, I mean, something like that to see just what. Evil.
It's already out there. There have been comments before on the Hebrew community pages of people asking what kind of businesses. Are needed in Hebron. Some of the input is very valuable, some of the input is out of our control.
So, so just FYI, there's twelve hundred people. And, and they all attend RAM and their answer is gonna be Taco Bell.
Yep.
Just letting you know.
Probably.
All right, Tiffany. Yeah, if I could jump in, if you don't mind, um, so, thank you so much for pulling. Because I think it finally provides some direction in terms of where we want to go from an economic development standpoint. I guess I do have a concern with some of the language in this and specifically on goal four, which was specifically about promoting Hebron's rural aesthetic. So I think two things can be true, right? I think that. Hebron does have a unique rural aesthetic. It's what brings people in, it's what people enjoy. And I think it is also true. That with certain groups of people in town, the term rural aesthetic and rural character. Is used as a cudgel to keep businesses out. So. I support this, but I want to caution you in saying. You know, sometimes our laws are pretty clear, if something is zoned commercially. It's zoned commercially.
Yep.
And we don't get choices there, right, in a private land transfer, as we may find out, who knows? Um, I don't want us to be a town of no. Um, I, I'm very concerned that I think we're a town of no.
I agree, yep.
And, um, I think we want to make sure that we preserve our character. But it cannot come at the expense of going out and recruiting new businesses and just telling. Certain types of businesses know right off the bat. Let's hear what they have to say. It could be they find it's not a good fit, right? But I don't want us to say no right off the bat because they're not a sustainable living or local agriculture business. So I just want to caution you that I don't want us to continue to be a town of no.
I agree.
Great.
I agree. I mean, I don't think that, um. I don't think that we have. Uh, we don't have a ton of businesses looking for, to come into town right now. So I don't think that we have, um, a lot of opportunity to say no with, with the one recent section, exception. But, uh, but I agree with you, and I think when we're talking about promoting businesses or recruiting businesses. That would be the opportunity to go after the ones that were, right? I mean, we're not. We would be looking for specific groups of businesses. We're not saying no to anybody, we're just specifically asking for people to commit.
And I think the goal should be, as this program gets off the ground and we do get, I think the goal would be. Lots of different types of businesses would try to solicit to come here. That we don't say no because, well, they don't fit our character. We need to be open to everybody. Five percent of the grand list is business. Everything else, to your point, is on the backs of the property taxpayers, renters, homeowners, people who own cars. So, I don't mind, I don't mind seeing the terminology in here, but I do want to know that it's often used as a cudgel to keep people out.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I agree with you, and I do think that we currently have a reputation of being a difficult.
Absolutely.
To work with, like, so we need to look at that, like. Everybody needs to look at that, all the boards, everybody.
We read about all, we read about all the boards, because the reputation is, there's certain boards that have their own agenda.
I was, I was there over at Ranch House the other day with a guy who was doing the sign installation. And he did not know me, and he was talking to the owners and telling them, Hebron's tough.
And that's a problem.
Yep.
And we do have to fix the problem. We don't want to embrace the problem, we want to fix.
Yep.
And we do have to get the, that's why we have to get the boards to have some, at least some cohesive agreement or some agreement on what we're, you know, collaborating. They seem to many times have their own agenda.
Yep.
Which is, is frustrating, because then if we support it here and then in practice, the no is in practice. Yes, you're welcome, and then, but go talk to that person, now you're not welcome anymore.
Right.
And we don't know that sometimes, so I have to, I have a couple of things, but I've, you can want to jump in.
Hey, Michelle, thanks for coming tonight. So I have questions, the goals and objectives and vision statements, they're all great. It helps us visualize where we want to go. My question is about metrics and measurables and returns on, on these goals and objectives.
Yeah.
At the end of the day. Who, who is the person? Where does the bug stop? Is it you? Is it you? Is it you? Who is it?
For what? For as far as like being able to measure it or as far as like where?
You know, saying we want X Y Z businesses in town. So in twelve months from now, who's the person who's gonna come back and say? Yeah, but as a result of this, we opened up three, four, five.
Okay, so we, we talked about this and the, um, percentages, remember? What would, what did we say about that? Do you remember?
In terms of rogues?
We talked about how we can measure this, and we said that we would be able to measure it by the percentage. Of, I think it was of the, of the commercial contribution to the tax base.
Yeah, great.
Right, so we, that's what we were talking about, was being able to measure it. Is that what you're asking me? Is that being able to measure it that way?
Yes, and, and at the end of the day, who, who's responsible? Is it you?
Probably, yeah.
Okay.
I mean.
But you're a volunteer.
Yeah.
Well.
I don't think it's.
I don't think it's her.
No. I think she.
I mean, I can't get the data myself, right? I mean, but I would be the one that would probably bring it back to you.
Town, the town was responsible for the.
Right, yeah.
And my next question is, is like potential business experience, right? So someone calls one eight hundred Hebron and says, I'm interested in opening a business. What do they talk to first?
No.
Okay.
Yep.
So is there, maybe we can do this another time, but like, is there a script? Like, what, what's your, when you talk to people, how do you screen them? You know, what's a, is everybody a go?
He meets with anyone who's interested to coming into town, and then. A, a lot of, and I don't want to speak for you, Matt, so it's stop me if I'm wrong, but a lot of potential interest comes in and falls flat pretty quickly. Like, your, your interest level is gonna be a lot higher, and a lot of times it has nothing to do with town, it's just. Okay, well, this space would, no, that doesn't actually work in this, you know, this, this, but this is gonna cost too much money, or this isn't connected to the sewer, this isn't on, you know what I mean? People, a lot of people who are looking for development are coming in and looking at multiple different properties and locations all at the same time. And the, you know, Hebron is not, it's gonna be on their list, it's, it's maybe. Not gonna have the population they need or the, or the, you know, the resources they need or however it may be. Um, and then we also have restrictions with water right now, and, you know, I'm sure that everyone's fully versed in that. But the water restrictions are huge, like, we have, you know, we're talking about walkability downtown and properties that are available that we can put sidewalks to. Well, that's great, they don't have any water. Um, and they don't have any way to get it, right? So, you know, there's, um, any of those, you know, those, those properties that, that are, that are here across from us, like, they're not, they're not viable property right now. Um, because we can't put a water source for them, um, and that's gonna be a big deal to, to a business. You know, I, I'm not gonna build my business from the ground up and then put in a well. No, I'm going to a town for a reason. Um, so, you know, I think that, I think that we, we, we have to, um. We just have to look at all, all of those pieces together and maybe it's something we can continue to chip away at.
So, and I have another question about the, the, our current, um, business relationship with the chamber. Correct, correct me if I'm wrong, the perception is they haven't really done much.
That is not their fault. We, the first thing that we said we wanted to do with them was to de- develop a business directory. And it took us almost eight months to get them the data we needed to get started.
So where is that right now, that?
They have it.
So.
They're, so they're calling businesses now to get, to start updating the directory. They have two interns working on it. Um, as well as their, um, assistant in the office there. Um, and they're doing the phone calls to start updating the directory. Until we have a directory, we have nothing.
Right. And so when should, do we expect to see the product?
The products from the directory?
Yeah.
Um, I mean, it will probably take them, she's only had it for a month. So it'll probably take them, I would guess, another couple of months, but, um, they have a board meeting tomorrow.
What, what more do you see from the, the relationship?
I would like to see them take an event in town. Um, that's one of the things that we get as a, um, as a benefit, is, um, is that they can run an event for us in town.
So we're paying for something that we haven't received, the service.
Correct.
That's not good, right?
I would agree.
Okay.
Yep.
So, what do we talk to about it actually happening?
It is happening, but it took us. Oh, the event? No, we haven't even decided on an event yet. When we brought them in, we were hoping to have them work on Maple Fest and we changed our minds.
Okay. I'd like to see more from them, like, see more of a return in investment.
I think we have to give them more to start with.
Yeah, I know we're not Glastonbury, they probably spend the majority of their time.
This has nothing to do with them. They are ready to help us. We didn't give them what they needed. They can't build a business directory for them, for us, if we give them nothing to start with.
Right, okay.
And we didn't give it to them. It took us a long time to give it. So. We had to wait. Um, we can't have them do, go out and start working with the towns until we have something to start with. Uh, I mean, they're not gonna just walk up and down Main Street and start getting business information. So, uh, but they haven't now, so they're working on it. Um, and if we had given it to them six months ago, they would have been working on it then. Um, so we have to hold up our end of this too.
Okay, so I'm gonna bring it back just for, and, and we can keep moving here is, uh, obviously, one big takeaway for me is. We need to see you on a regular basis, we, so we have to decide, because we can't just be a, an initial discussion and then good luck.
Yeah.
It doesn't really work, and, and you need to feel the support and, and this dialogue is great, because we're bringing up things that were gonna help you. You can't just be on an island, and so, um, we'll have to decide or whatever works best, but, you know, whether it's, whatever you think the right time is, or if you have an update.
We can do it either way.
So, we can talk about that offline, but there's no question, this is super valuable and. And I think we've accomplished more in the last forty minutes than I think we've accomplished in the last, how many, how many years that I've been listening to economic development? I gotta tell you. Um, and, and it's just, it's just, that's just an opinion. So, um, because we have to have shared vision, we have to have collaboration. In the past, I don't, I don't, we didn't have that, and so this, and it's just, it's, it is what it is, and so this is great. But I did want to ask one question regarding, um, Taco Bell. Um, that, um, no, I don't, but, but I, I, it is a serious question framed by an initial little bit of humor. But if we have a group of twelve hundred people that want something different than a flower shop. This doesn't address that, this said, these businesses are not businesses that are gonna be. Attractive to some portion of our community that is a part of our community. Um, and so I, I wonder about that, um, again, I, I don't go to Taco Bell, but just as an example. If, if the kids need something like that, are we gonna discourage that from coming because it doesn't fit the rural aesthetic? So how do we incorporate that? Because in its, in its structure, I want to make sure that we don't. Create an omission by, uh, excluding by omission, or, yeah, right, okay, but this doesn't say we would take a Taco Bell. Um, and then I also, on that same line, and it's just a takeaway for me, um, is, but I, I, I like this, I like this a lot. But also, the bigger, um, taxpayer is gonna be attributed, is gonna be associated with a bigger business. So at some point in the right spot in town, I'm not against another larger taxpayer that may not necessarily be the small. Um, entrepreneurial, uh, flower shop, pottery shop, whatever, so I don't want to exclude that either by omission.
I think that that's where your, your zoning guideline. I mean, your, your zoning is not gonna allow. The Dollar General to come into the, to the Hebron Historic District, right? Because you've got so many permitting processes available there to you. But the areas that are over by like CVS, for example, have, have a more open zoning, like that's commercial zoning, commercial zoning, right? I think you said that earlier, exactly, like, if it's commercial, it's commercial, there's nothing we can do about it.
But I want, but I want the vision to, to, to not exclude that or not support that in the right environment in conjunction with our zoning.
So I think the thing that I, the way that I'm taking this, and maybe we need to clarify it then, is that when we say rural aesthetic. I think I'm considering the zoning regulations that we have the ability to impose on any business that comes in. So if, if Taco Bell decides they want to come into town, right? Okay, but you can't put your backlit sign there because that isn't our zoning regulations. You can't, um, you know, you, I, I'm sure there's like a whole host of other zoning things that would make it fit, you know. Your parking has to be in the back, your drive thru has to be that, whatever it is, you have to have a bush out front.
Yeah.
Um, there's gonna be regulations, so when I think of the rural aesthetic. I think that's kind of what I had in mind, is that we're promoting the rural aesthetic. So if McDonald's or Taco Bell or whoever wants to commit, I mean, listen, they're in some of these towns, you know, you go up on the Cape or whatever. And McDonald's, you want to come in, cool, cool, but you've got to put up a wooden sign for your.
Sure. Farmington out that way, that exactly, or that way.
Exactly, exactly.
Balls, that, you know, they're not backlit signs.
Right.
It, it, it fits in perfectly.
And that's why we have such as, you know, we have a lot of regulations in that, in that category, and we also have the special permit.
So, so maybe it's back to, maybe my distraction, and again, it's not a criticism, it's just an observation that we're rooted in small privately owned businesses. And businesses that align with our rural character, you know, whatever, and so. I just, that was a part where I'm like, yes, but we might be missing something in the right.
Those, and we have those zones available, right? Like, we have, we have the commercial zones that are much more open. Where we have the ability to bring these people in, but we still have the ability to control the rural aesthetic of the business.
Right, so maybe it's something, some reference to our commercial, supporting also our commercials, they're separate, but so that was just an observation.
Yeah, absolutely, that would make sense.
Okay.
Yep.
And so I'm gonna, I, I think we'll end it here, because this is great, I mean, we could go on. And, uh, but, again, just on behalf of the board and the town, thank you for taking the initiative. Thank you for putting this together and creating this sort of dialogue and collaboration is a wonderful next step for us to really ramp this up.
Right.
And so thank you very much, and we'll go to our continued.
So what, what do you want my next step to be?
I think I would like you to, um, maybe think about a couple of things that were referenced tonight, and then look back then on your, in your vision document and say. Can I incorporate some of those or not?
Yep.
And so here's an adjustment, and then bring it back to us when you're ready. And, um, and then we'll at least get even, uh, at least get some, yes, that's exactly.
That's kind of what I need, like, I feel like I want to make sure I have a document in my hand.
Yeah.
Even if it's this one that's kind of at a high level, that is. Rural.
We have support, and as you're going out, the board, this has support, I've ordered something, so if you could consider some of the things we talked about, maybe bring that back to us when it's convenient for you, when you're in the twenty ninth hour.
Tuesday, so we can turn this around real quick.
And then we'll, we'll be ready to, um, we'll leave it on our agenda as old business. Donna, if you could please, uh, if I was to build a vision statement, we'll leave it as old business on the agenda. Uh, and then when it's appropriate, we will welcome you back and we'll keep going.
Yeah, that sounds great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Excellent job, thank you. Mr. Tierney, we are moved to nine E, I think.
You're correct.
You want to tell us, take this.
Excuse me. Yes, I need to schedule a special town meeting for Department of Public Works, Architectural Design Professionals funding and the Gilead Hill School Roof Funding. Proposals were recently received from Design Professionals for the Public Works Building Project. The Building Committee will soon be making recommendations of funding will be requested for approval for a special town meeting. Recommendation date for the special town meeting is Thursday, April 24th, 2025 at 7:00 PM at the Douglas Library. The official call to the meeting and the appointment of the moderator and the alternate moderator will be approved at the April 3rd, 2025. Also a supplemental appropriation request or recommendation will also be requested from the Board of Selectment and the Board of Finance. More information will be available at April 3rd, 2025, Board of Selectment. Selectmen may wish to consider placing the Gilead Hill School Roof Project Local Match in the amount of $1,545,678. On the special town meeting agenda, consideration of funding through a short term note with the intent of rolling it into a planned future bond, existing tasks projects and for DPW projects, then there's a proposed motion.
Okay, so let's read the motion. And, um, I did ask, uh, Richard and Mal to attend it. Again, this is part of what they do. So, uh, if there's any, anything that can help facilitate a discussion around some of these moving parts, thank you for, for joining us. But let's, uh, first get the motion on, uh, the table. Mr. Larson, are you ready?
Uh, I'm just wondering, do we want to do a clarification? Cause there's a different amount here.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, this is.
Yeah, this is for Gilead. Not Hebron, we already, yeah.
All right, you're out. You're out. Just kidding. Go ahead, please.
Moves the Hebrew Board of Select would schedule a special town meeting for Thursday, April 24th, 2025 at 7:00 PM at the Douglas Library of the Hebron Community Room and to act on the following. One, approve a supplemental appropriation for funding. Uh, the, the professional design services for the Public Works Building Project at 550 Oakholchester Road. And two, approve a short term note to fund the town match for the Hebron Hill School Roofing Project.
Did I read that wrong?
There we go.
Sorry, I got the wrong.
You're good. Okay, so motion's been read. Um, let's make sure everyone's sort of on board with what we're trying to accomplish here. Gentlemen, do you want to add anything here, Mal, for discussion purposes? Okay, okay. Making sure I recognize you, uh, uh, and what about discussion on this?
So this is just to approve. The meeting. And then add April 3rd, the actual.
We have two items. Okay. I just want to make sure there isn't a, because there's a lot of moving parts with all this and we have two significant items that are on there. So, no discussion then? Any discussion?
It's always a good meeting when Richard's here.
It is. I feel, I feel more comfortable.
Not that it's not with you, Mal, but you know, Richard is great. Mal's great too.
Richard Steiner, off of the record, Richard Steiner, 330 West Street. Number of multiple building companies.
So e- everything's good with moving, hit with, moving ahead with Gilead Hill. I know there's a lot of like, we had an issue last time with some wording on motions and, and everything. So like, we're good as far as timing and, and motions and everything.
I believe, yes.
We, we're going to correct Hebron to Gilead.
We caught that. You caught that.
But all right, yeah, as long as everything's, as, as long as everything's in order, um, in favor.
There's a brief update. Final meeting with Department of Administrative Services, uh, next Friday. It's a Zoom meeting as relates to Hebron Elementary School. Um, I'll participate, Mal will participate. Caitlin Scheller from Board of Education Building, Building Business Manager. And, uh, Robert Roche, who is the President of Friar Architecture. The expectation is that we'll be released bid right after that meeting. And the plan is to go out to bid April for the roof replacement at Hebron. And then get, Gilead, the plan is for roof replacement in the
And we have plenty of time to secure all the funding for that, right?
Funding well secured for that. For that one. And that's why we're placing this one on this next meeting for the other school. So we have, uh, a better market or pool of bidders. So we're not waiting for like a fall referendum with the rest of the.
Okay, any additional discussion? Good. Thank you so much. Yeah, all those in favor, please sit by by saying aye. Those opposed, nay. Or please note if you wish to abstain. Dan.
Uh, Dale Larson, aye.
Keith Pettit, aye.
Tiffany Tilly, aye.
Peter Caspari, the motion passed unanimously. Thank you very much. That moves us to nine after our agenda, April 3rd meeting. Uh, as always, please review the agenda, anything, any additions, changes, any suggestions? Please direct them to Andy, uh, to Tommy Andrew's office. Uh, any other, uh, new business you wish to bring forward to the board, Mr. Tierney? Any new business that hasn't otherwise been addressed? Okay, that moves us to the consent agenda, which are items that are considered to be routine in nature, which the board may not need to discuss individually, maybe vote on as a group. Any board member who wishes to discuss a particular item in this section may request the chair to remove it, related discussion and a separate vote if necessary. You have the approval of the minutes, uh, of, um, uh, we'll get to the motion. We have approval of minutes in the tax, uh, the tax refunds noted. Uh, Claudia, would you, uh, read the motion, please?
I wouldn't. Thank you.
Sorry.
Uh, move that the Board of Selectmen approve the following consent agenda items and motion contained therein as if individually adopted.
Thank you so much. Here's my reach. Okay, so, uh, no one wants to pull anything out? Does anyone have anything they wish to add before we move to?
I'm good.
Okay. Mr. Larson?
Uh, Dale Larson, aye.
Keith Pettit, aye.
Tiffany Tilly, aye.
You got for aye, the consent agenda, motion passing unanimously. Thank you very much. These are reports. It's item 11 on the list, uh, agenda item 11. I do not have any for A. Tiffany, Board of Ed.
They're meeting tonight, so no update.
Thank you, Mr. Larson. Finance.
Uh, just not, not a great.
Other than we're meeting all the time with them. Okay, land acquisition, Mr. Pettit.
Uh, has not met.
Thank you. Claudia, Ram Board of Ed.
Just real quick, um, as you all know very well, aware of the RAM budget with a 2.6% increase, which is expected to pass by the RAM Board on April 7th.
Thank you so much. That moves us to public comment. I'll reference my, uh, uh, the structure of public comment, which is, was covered under section four. Donna, is there anybody online that wishes to offer a public comment?
There is no one at this.
Zan, you're it. Nothing? I didn't know she was ready. Is she a resident? All right, you got nothing, man. We have no.
She's the only one here. You can speak even if you're not a resident.
She can say how handsome we are.
Is that, uh, the resolution, if you choose to adopt the ordinance, it has to be determined by the end of the month. So you'd have to have a special meeting in order to do that. Because we have to notify the, um, Office Policy and Management bill later than April 15th.
If you have April 15th, we have our first meeting April 3rd.
And I will be out of the country from, uh, I'll be out of the country the, uh, this through the 12th.
You are planning to go back.
There's a beach, so.
To be determined. Okay, so thank you for that.
That does not leave a lot of time because you're talking Thursday, Friday, and she's on vacation.
I mean, I was going through the charter. I believe that the charter, I mean, the charter states it gives you the.
We'll just get, I think, once you get the opinion from the town attorney, you're going to make a decision.
Okay, that's true.
It's just a resolution.
If it's just the selectmen selecting to approve the option.
I mean, like I said, once again, colleagues of mine that have done it in the towns that they know of. The way that was written through the legislature says you can adopt this and do it by the Boards of Select, but I know Boards of Select that have already done it, but that doesn't mean we have to be sheep and follow the.
Do we, do we have to have a motion here to have a public hearing before our next meeting? Because we can always schedule it and then cancel it if the attorney comes back saying it's not necessary.
You do have to schedule a public hearing to, uh, conduct one, yes.
So should we schedule it tonight in case it is in ordinance? And if it's not required to be in ordinance, we can always cancel.
So what I would propose is that special town meeting could have one thing on the agenda. We could do it via Zoom and, and your business is done. I know towns that have done that as well. And have a special town meeting because the way their, their meeting agendas fell. They just got out of, well, they got out of computer at one o'clock in the afternoon or whatever, to convene for everybody. You take up the one item and you, I mean, we have to notice the meeting, of course, but.
Right, you have to notice the meeting, but that was, that's the thing. Do, do we tonight need to have a motion to have the meeting? Or, or can it just be noticed five days in advance by Donna?
Well, I think.
You have to schedule, you have to schedule a public hearing.
If it's an ordinance, if you can't just follow this, I think, Susan, you can, Suzanne, you can help me if I'm wrong. I think they tried to fast track this option and they, I want the legislator put it through. As if we were to adopt this, we're, we're covered. But let me get that answer from the town attorney.
I mean, that's how it means.
It's. That's how, well. Was it the House bill in there?
It just refers to it.
So however you interpret it as.
But the, the House bill wasn't in the packet, was it? I figured it just addresses what it, you know.
Well, Donna, how much time do we need to schedule? Do we, do we need to do a motion to put a date out or can we do that?
Schedule, we could schedule tonight. A public hearing for April 3rd. Six fifty, six forty five. Your meeting and then either way, on April 3rd, if it's, oh, if it's the selectmen adopting or approving the local option, you could do it. If it's an ordinance that we need to enact.
We can do that.
We could have the public hearing before the meeting and adopting ordinance after the meeting.
Let's do that.
That works for me.
We don't need a motion. We do. But we, we get to the motion. I move to modify the agenda to add item, crap, we're already down at 12, aren't we? I'd like to add item 12A, which is a, uh, motion to set a, was it public hearing? For April 3rd. Thank you, sir.
Six forty five.
Well, no, 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 we have to, we have to add the item to the agenda first. That takes a two third vote. Then we can have the motion to set the meeting. So I would like to add it to the agenda as item 12A.
Would you add it as 11 something? Cause. Oh, we already finished. Okay, we already passed.
So that's, that's my, that's my motion to add 12A. Which is, you know, possible, possible motion for a, um,
Public hearing.
Public hearing.
Second. Okay, motions, any discussion? Those in favor? Passed unanimously.
Now your next one.
Okay, so now I would like to move to have a public hearing for the consideration of an ordinance regarding the use of alternate motor vehicle depreciation schedule. Do I have to say local option in there?
I put in parentheses or something, yeah, local option.
Local option for use of alternate motor vehicle depreciation schedule for Thursday, April 3rd at 6:30.
Six forty five.
Six forty five. Six forty five.
Okay, motion's second. Motion's been read. Any discussion? All those in favor? Passed unanimously. Thank you.
You guys are the best.
Thank you.
So we moved through 12. Thank you. Again, Anthony Suzanne, again. Moves us to section 13 on our agenda, which is, is listed as an anticipated executive session. We're ready to move forward with that.
We're ready to move forward.
Okay, so maybe Donna, you could remind, uh, the, or any of the structure of an executive session relative to those that are participating or listening.
We, we just want to talk quickly how the board wants to do that. What we could do is, you know, move into executive session. You guys have to figure out whether you want to invite me in at some point. And we could close the meeting and then we'll shut this off and the rest of the meeting, you know, won't be, uh, videoed and taped anymore. And we'll just have to know when we come out of executive session, if there's any action taken that should be stated after, uh, executive session and then.
I think to make it slightly easier on Donna, would we like to just adjourn to the Clio room?
That's a good idea.
That way Donna doesn't have to stop.
Yeah, the five of us could go upstairs and, yeah.
Done it in my office before, go to Clio room.
So we leave it, so.
So the five of us would leave.
This would stay on. Don't have to like juggle around.
You want to leave this on.
Yeah, I can get some, that people who are listening online, that there's an online record if we do something outside of executive. They should know that they're going to action.
Yep, let's do that.
Okay, so I move that the Board of Selectmen enter into an executive session for the Town Manager's Annual Evaluation. Um, with the, um, option to invite Town Manager Andy Tierney in for selected portions.
Could you just note the time? Because we are going to be.
Nine oh six.
Thank you. All right, so we will adjourn and then.
Uh, we have to vote now. We don't have to vote to come out. We got to vote to.
All right, all those in favor. Okay, unanimously. Asses, thank you so much.